Sorry, I mispronounced your name, I'm very sorry. Theodore Morges.
Morges.
Morges. And Melissa Anzavino?
That's good.
Okay, seeking an area variance at 24037 of the district regulations in our 20 zoning district where 40 feet is required to decide property line. The applicant can only provide 21 feet for the installation of an above-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 19 feet. The property is located at 27 Dennis Road, identified tax grid number 625801112632 in the town of Wappingers. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you just state your name, please?
My name is Ted Morges at 27 Dennis Road in the town of Wappinger. And I thank the board for letting me speak tonight. It's not as exciting as a tractor supply, but, you know, we're here.
So it looks like you need a pool, huh?
Yeah, so in front of you should be a plan that I drew up and a copy of the survey you should have.
Is that the plan?
Yeah, that's it. I'm not the best at that, but you should have a copy of the survey. The survey is, it's a little wonky, so Mr. Reinheimer that lives behind me, Rick Reinheimer, with the previous owners of my property, they did a property swap years ago because his property technically went right up against the corner of my foundation. So where you see the new property line on the survey, that is the one that's in question. That used to be the property of 27 Dennis Road. It goes back into the woods there. So when they did the swap, it made a corner that comes into my backyard and then promptly goes back out into the woods behind my shed to give me some woods access back there. The place that the pool is planning on being put, or is planned on being put, there's nowhere else in the yard that I could put it. The only other spot that is within all of the setbacks, there's a patio there, a paver patio. And if I put it further to the left side of the property, I'd be too close to the neighbor who's really close that you could see the house right there.
What's the topography like on that? Is it sloped down?
It slopes up to the property line and then is a sharp drop-off into the woods on the other side of my property line. So from the house to my property line is, if I had to guess, it's roughly four to five feet. It actually gets, it's worse in the far corner, but where the property line is, there's like a shelf and then it goes down into the woods. So there's no drainage issue. The only house that can see where this pool is being put are the Parex, which are right next door to me, which I have more than 20 feet to the side. Mr. Reinheimer's property, you can't see where this is going from his house. He's at 113 Widmer. And yeah, I just ask for the 19-foot. The 21 feet only comes in probably halfway to the pool. The other half is more than 40 feet to the rear property line. So it's really one corner that's in question, so.
Okay. Any questions?
I do, yeah.
Good.
I mean, certainly seems like you got a whole lot of property lines going on.
I know.
The survey makes it look, whoever comes out to see it, it's pretty straightforward when you see it. It's just the survey, when they did it, it's kinda confused. Like when I bought the house, I was like, what is happening here? But, once you see it, you realize it.
Why don't you do me a favor then? Come on up here for me.
Sure, yeah, yeah. So, this is my living room.
Got that.
That's my shed.
Yeah, got that. Now, is this the back of your property?
No, so...
I'm gonna, I'm, sorry, I know you can't see this, B, but we'll get through it.
So this dotted line is the old existing property.
Gotcha.
So that came from my front property line. It cut through where the existing patio was. Mr. Reinheimer lives over here.
Okay.
Okay, so they swapped. I got this piece here, .05 acres. Mr. Reinheimer got, this is old existing, so he got this square right here.
Gotcha, okay.
So this is the new, if you want to take...
This line right here?
That line is my property line to this corner. And then it goes straight back to a stone wall that is on by the corner.
Back here? Goes back here?
Yes, that side. So there's the, yeah, I have, I printed this off of...
I saw that, okay, so now, okay, goes that way. Now goes over here.
Yeah, and then this is the sideline.
That's the sideline. And this is your line here? No, yeah, this is right here, down here.
So I'm basically planning to put the pool where the word lot is on the survey. So it's 15 feet from my living room and it's 20...
Right around here.
Red that. It's 15 feet from my living room and then it's a 20-foot pool.
Back through here.
And then it's 21 feet from the, from the edge of the pool to that property line. And this is all woods back here. So there's nothing back there.
Obviously, that's not your property.
It's obviously now I don't own it. Mr. Reinheimer's house is roughly where your family is. Yeah, that's drawn out, that's drawn out.
And that's exactly what I've got there.
That's what we just did, yeah. So we could see where the property lines were.
Yeah, that's what I just did because I was a little confused on that one.
Spider web.
Okay, that, I understand, I see it now. Don, you've got to...
Yeah, that's why, the way that the survey company did it, they kinda left a bunch of stuff.
The pool would be about there, approximately.
Hi, before you go, Mr. Morges, Ted, okay, just out of curiosity, these photographs, what are we looking at?
I'm sorry, that's, that's where the pool is going. So I just recently had patio work done. And when the excavator was back there for the patio, I had him level out the area that I felt the pool was going, because I wanted it to settle for the winter. They're not the best photos, but you can see, I just wanted you to be able to see my patio. And then the other photo is of my shed.
This is your patio?
That's my patio. So that is the only other spot that a pool could potentially go, that there's an existing patio there. And, so I just wanted you to see this. There's no other spot that I can move this thing.
Why don't you put a patio out there?
Why? Because it was already leveled. Well, there was already a patio.
So this, so, Howie, would you mind putting that back for one second? Is that what this looks like?
That's what I was just gonna do.
That basically...
There we go, that's what I was just gonna, yeah.
Okay, so the pool...
So the pool, it was snow-covered in the black and white.
There we go, just about that thing.
The pool will be here.
The pool is about here. This is, this is a hill.
Gotcha, gotcha.
That's the hill that comes down. This is the leveled-out spot for the pool. And then the drop-off is, you see some snow here, and then it, then it drops right there.
So do you have to do any fill in that to bring it up, or are you just...
No, I leveled it.
Yeah, actually, he's gotta put it down here.
There's a step back there for 48.
So if you look at this again, do this again, but, so if you do this, so your pool's gonna go right in here?
Basically with T.
About where that B is, or T or B is, yeah.
It's tough to do with the scale because it's really like 20 feet to the corner of the shed, 15 feet to here, and then 21 to here. But the way that, the way the survey came out, it's kind of tough for me to draw the exact spot the pool is going.
Leave that for just a second. Here's the shed.
Yes, so this, so this...
This is backwards, really.
So this is where the shed is, right here?
I guess it goes like that, maybe?
So this...
Does that sound right?
This is, this puddle right here, this basically here is where the pool might be to put the pool. The property line, I have a, I have a deer fence from my dogs right here, so it's about eight feet past that temporary fence. That's the property line, kind of drops right off.
So your property is behind the fence then?
Yeah, I still have behind that little fence, so you can see, I still have that. I just did that for the dogs and there's like a rock shelf back there.
Okay, so, any questions?
I'm good there.
I believe we should do those, maybe our site...
You say, yeah, definitely.
Sure, yeah.
Do you have a stakeout?
It's all leveled out already, I could put stakes there, but when you see it... Oh, the property line, there are a couple stakes out there and I'll get one more that was, that was covered over.
I can't do it this weekend, but I can do it the following weekend. I don't know how everybody is.
What is that date?
This weekend is fine.
Okay. But the following week.
Correct.
Yeah, I should be good to have.
So that'll be April 6th?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
April 6th for our site inspection, B?
Be there about nine o'clock.
Okay, yeah, about nine.
But the key's gonna be, is being shown us where the 40-foot is, so we can kinda...
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, for some reason, if for some reason one of us can't make it on the 6th, we'll... Okay, they get there some other time?
Yeah, my, my schedule's all over the place, so...
Well, if it's marked, we really don't even need to.
Okay, yeah, I'll mark it all, I'll mark it all out, so you can see.
And the property line in the back of it, right?
Yeah, yeah. There's already survey stakes back there, except for the one that's closest, but I'll mark that out.
Yeah, that's, that'll be good. And of course, where the pool will be.
Yeah, that, that's a hole in the ground.
You'll be able to see that.
Not a hole in the ground, but you know, it's, it's all graded out already, so.
Sounds good.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
I think that you got some homework.
Public hearing?
Pardon me?
The public hearing.
Yeah, we'll do that in a second. We're gonna have the public hearing for the next meeting, which is...
April 9th.
April 9th. So now you, you got some paperwork there?
Paperwork from B. Since the, out your neighbors.
Yeah.
I got papers all over the place tonight, I don't know what's going on here. That's that. That's that. Ah, here we go.
Oh, man, oh man, what is that thing?
So before he leaves, just a full disclosure, I do know Ted personally, but it will not have any effect on my decision.
Okay, fine, thank you.
We're, we're sorry, Ted.
He was, he was a good baseball coach.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All righty, next appeal. 1976, 7672. It's an interpretation. ENC S... Someone gonna help me out with this one?
Yes, you call.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Sorry about that. Properties, seeking an interpretation of section 240, 107B, district zoning regulations in our 20 zoning district. The applicant is seeking interpretation of the zoning board of appeals decision of a use variance dated December 27th, 2017, M and C of Duchess, Duchess, Inc. Application 187637 for the ability to expand the present approved use variance, uh, under, where am I here? Under, under the use variance received for the site on December 27th, 2017. This use variance was granted to utilize the existing 2,500 square foot commercial structure built in 1950 as a contractor shop and storage in a residential zoning district with no anticipated change in the site. Property is located at 20 McFarland Road, identified by tax grid number 615704720271 in the town of Wappinger. Hi there.
Hi.
If you could just state your name, please?
I am Margaret McManus with Beatty and Watson.
Margaret, how are ya?
I'm well.
All right, let's see here. So tell me a little bit about what you need here for the interpretation.
All right, so a little bit of history. I know that the previous owner came before the board and saw a use variance because the site had been basically utilized as a commercial property since the 1960s. It was determined by your board that, you know, a residential use wouldn't, wouldn't, wasn't financially viable on the site because of the existing infrastructure, the existing site. I know there was discussion about what type of use would have the least amount of impact on the surrounding residential uses, and I believe you came up with the contractor shop and storage.
Right.
And then after that, the use variance was granted, which I thank you for. The owner went to the planning board and at that time had a contract vendee, who is my client now, who wanted, who has a cleaning business, so it's similar to a contractor's yard. So he has a cleaning business, he utilizes the building for storage of the equipment that is used by the, the personnel. He parks cars or vehicles there that have our vans. He also parks some of these vehicles that have water product in them because they do commercial cleaning of carpets and such. Those he has to keep in a heated building, so he has those in another facility in, in Poughkeepsie. He would like to combine all of his facilities into one place. So he would like to be able to make the garage larger to accommodate parking several vans within the garage. Right now, there's a, it's a two-car garage, it's in, you know, a dilapidated condition. What, what also transpired before we got here was that once he took ownership of the property, he wanted to clear some of the property and make more of a lawn area, and in the process of that, overstepped his bounds and pushed some dirt a lot around the property. So right now, any activity has stopped. It was stabilized in November before it got too cold, so, so there was, silt fence was put up, the, the earth that was disturbed got some seed. It's, it's in a, it's in a, under construction condition. And so at this point, we want to be able to move forward with the restoration of the project site, but we need to know what that is going to look like in order to restore it. So are we, are we, are we able to expand the use and expand the size of the buildings? Or are we, you know, sandwiched into the size of the buildings that, you know, historically were on the site? So that's where we are in the interpretation is, we know that a use variance was granted, and with that use variance, are we allowed to expand the use on the site? So...
So are you asking, there's 2,500 that's been approved of square footage, you're asking to increase the size of it? What are you looking to do?
Yeah, so I'll take this over here. So there's, this is the existing building, and this is a concrete patio. We would like to enclose that concrete patio to make it one building. And then there's an existing garage here, which is, is in not very good shape, which we would like to take down and build a new garage here.
Same footprint or bigger size?
Larger footprint.
How much larger?
Double. Yep, so it's a two-car garage and we would like a four-car garage. So in the, in the documents that was sent to you... Under the description of property, it says, um, the total existing building area is 3,285 square feet. That's the foot, that's the footprint of, of the existing building and the garage combined. And we would like to increase the footprint of, of the, so there's a little chart, let's see. Yeah, so it's, it's, although it says 2,500 square feet, it's closer to 2,800 square feet for the existing building and another 475 square feet for the garage. And then we'd like to increase the 2,807 square feet to 3,437 square feet, you know? And they would like a second story if they can get it in there. And then the, the new garage is 900 square feet. I'm, I'm sorry, the new garage is...
Sounds like a new, completely new deal, doesn't it?
How big is it?
So, the footprint increases from 3,285 to 5,300, 437. But, square feet of footprint. But, the overall amount of impervious surface on the site decreases because we are going to take out some of the existing pavement and round out the, because there's, you know, there's pavement that goes onto the adjacent property and there's like a little pavement that doesn't go anywhere and isn't necessary. So there are reductions in impervious surfaces that will take place and will be, actually have post-impervious surface will be less than pre-impervious surface.
So I, I didn't quite hear that whole thing, because there was some other conversation going on.
Yeah.
Did you say the size of the footprint is going to decrease overall?
Not the size of the footprint of the buildings, but the amount of impervious surface on the property will decrease.
By, by removing or not using some...
By removing some impervious surface, mostly parking lot area, and restoring that to grass area. So there will be a reduction in impervious surfaces.
Now, you said something about a second story?
Right, so if, if it's possible, I mean, because right now, we're just asking for everything that we want, and, and we can, you know, go back from there, the, he wants to put it, so right now, there's a flat roof on the existing structure. It does have a partial peaked roof for some of it. So we would like to take this and make it a peaked roof. So down the middle of a peaked roof, you have enough area that you can stand up, stand up inside of a building, so that area, we would like to be able to utilize.
Utilize for what?
For either additional storage or, well, because the other area...
So that would be one and a half...
It would be like a one and a half story, not a two-story building. So this area would be enclosed and would become the office space, and then we could have more additional, um, storage of the box.
Square footage go from 3,275 to 5,337, is that what you said? Just wanna make sure I have the right numbers. So it's a 2,80475, right? Then you said 3,437 for the... 2,800 to 3,437. Then you wanna do 475 garage and 1,200, is that what you're saying? So you wanna increase it roughly 2,000 square feet in total?
Yeah, it's about 2,000 square feet. Total, total floor area, not footprint area, right?
Margaret, so your proposal, if he gets the garage and you increase the front building in that corner...
Yes.
This is saying the first floor will increase to 5,437 square feet with additional 2,700 square feet to the second floors?
Yeah, that, that's the old thing.
I had a thought, so, yeah, I mean, obviously you've got it in here, but you're right, something, yeah, that's, yeah.
So the existing main building has a footprint right now of, let's say, 2,800 square feet, 2,811.
Okay, the, the original one right now is 2,800.
So actually, if you look on your plans, there's a chart...
Yeah.
That has all these numbers on it.
Okay.
Right here.
Good.
So the existing floor area for the main building is 2,811, and the existing one-story garage is 474, which gives you a total floor area of 3,285 square feet. We would like to propose to increase the main building, first floor, to 3,437 square feet. That takes in the concrete pad that already exists and brings that into the building. We anticipate approximately 1,800 square feet of that on the second floor within the corridor of the main roof. And then the garage, we, we would like to increase that to an 1,800 square foot, which is basically 30 by 60. It's a four-bay garage.
So primarily, you're doing, like you said, a little, wow, yeah, over half, over double
Yeah, just about doubling the size of that.
And if you do that, does that consolidate everything along one building? So I understand you have another facility or two, does that consolidate everything?
That would consolidate your vans onto this site.
Everything completely?
Everything, and then, you know, a little expansion, so we don't have to be back here in five years looking for a third, you know, another bay on the garage. So this is, he's anticipating...
The garage, the four-car, four...
Four bay.
So what's hap, I mean, kind of a, what's happening with the four-car garage? What's gonna be in the four-car garage?
My, my name is Carlos Espinoza.
Come on up, come on up. So they, because it's, it's not a recorder, so in order to...
It's not recording, or it is?
Yes. My name is Carlos Espinoza. I'm the owner of the KMP facility business. The reason for the four-car garage is that, right now, we are renting in a space in Poughkeepsie because we have, uh, commercial trucks, vans, they carry $70,000 equipment on it to clean carpets. And the problem that we got is that we don't have the space to have this car garage, I mean, these cars in a garage with the warm temperature, especially in the winter time. So I'm paying over $3,000 to have these four vans in storage over the winter. Now, the, the, we are here and we are, I didn't expect to spend that much money doing all this. I need your help. When I, when I got here and I tried to purchase the property, you know, we never thought that this is gonna be as much work for everybody. But now, we are requesting this because we wanted to make sure that we got everything what we need in order to utilize all the, my business into one place. Right now, I have trucks in Poughkeepsie, I do my conference and training rooms, I am training, um, for my employees in Middletown. So now, with this allowance, I can build my office. Right now, the office that I have is in my house. When I purchased this, my ambition was to have my office here also. But now, when I try to do something, they say you can't build anything because the variance is only used as it is. You can't do anything more. So I spent 300 and some dollars in something that, right now, as, you know, some of you guys walk in there, it's packed with my equipment and my supplies that I have. Now I don't have room for my, my trucks. So that's why we requesting this, to have an office space and probably a training room on the second floor or storage. And then we have the four-car garage space, so I can park inside my, my, my vans, that's it. And another thing, we are operating, and I, I don't know if you have heard anybody from the neighbors complaining about what we doing there. It's very quiet, you know, nobody seems when my guys are there or not. Like I said, you know, it was proposed, and we give full plan detail of what the operation is all about, and so far, you know, none of the neighbors is complaining about this.
Okay, that's fine.
So, so what happens when you, so how many vehicles do you have there today going in and out of the facility?
Right now, we, we park four, four normal vans, transit vans, four vans. They're not equipped with anything, but they're there for my guys, they go in there at 4:00 to pick up the supplies, get in the vans and go to work. And then they come back at 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, they park the vans and they leave. That's it.
So it's an overnight operation?
It's an overnight.
They come to work at night, pick up the vans, leave the site, get whatever supplies they need, they work overnight, they come back, they leave the vans, and then they leave the property.
Right.
So there's, there's not a lot of traffic, there's no sign outside, it's, there's no retail space, there's no customers that come to the site.
No.
So the four-car garage is for the four cleaning vans?
Exactly.
So those vans have water within them, so they need to be in a heated space.
They're expensive equipment.
It is expensive. And like I said, you know, the other, the, once we have this, I can put more equipment. My business, thank God, is growing, but you know, I, I got tired of paying a lot of storage. I was paying over $4,000 a month just in the storage to have everything everywhere. Now I purchased this, I say, you know, I'm gonna make the investment on this and not paying 2,500 for a mortgage, but now it's packed and I don't have the ability... it's packed and I don't have the ability to put everything what I need. So that's what I, I need your help to see what we can do-
Okay.
-to have everything in, in one place.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um-
So if, just a, a quick, quick question, Mr. Espinoza, he was asking about the neighbors. We wouldn't-
Excuse me, you should hide your phone, please.
Yeah.
What are you doing?
Uh, so preemptively, I'm just going to say, we did go before the planning board and presented the plan, and obviously they can't vote for or against it, but we determined at the meeting that our next step was to come here because no one was really sure about the procedure of whether or not the use variance allowed for an expansion of the use.
Okay, that's what the interpretation is for.
That's what the interpretation is for.
That's kind of what I, because this is what I'm trying to figure out while you're doing all this talking.
(laughing)
Why did we need an interpretation just, but now I understand why.
So, I mean, so for purposes of what, um, you know, was before the board, you know, and there were some discussions as to, you know, what was, was anything contemplated? And the prior owner who came in more or less wanted to just flip the property, I mean, that was the discussion we had at some length. It really wasn't contemplated about doing any work to the buildings. In retrospect, thinking that the buildings were, you know, fifty years old plus, I mean, there probably should have been some discussion about that. And I guess to that point, um, what's being suggested here, um, let me just clarify, is to remove the smaller frame garage totally and replace it with a new building.
Yes.
Double the size.
So for, for two, two, a two-bay garage to a four-bay-
Four-bay garage.
Double the size, right.
And it is in the center of the property, the farthest away from either side. One side is also a commercial endeavor.
So, um, and, you know, so that, I mean, and I think in some respects, the u-, the use variance contemplates at least a replacement of the buildings that are there, arguably within, um, you know, within the setbacks and, and things of that nature. I, I, you know, we didn't, I don't think the use variance can be viewed as simply, you know, requiring that the buildings that are on the site remain on the site in the existing continues.
Well, I guess that's kind of what I really thought it was going to be.
Oh, I mean, I, the owner of the property would have the ability to replace the buildings and repair the buildings if they pay.
Yeah, well, that's different, but, you know, we're doubling the size here now of everything.
Well, I mean-
That's not quite the same use variance.
But the use variance also contemplates outside use. So the use variance contemplates outdoor storage, which was basically what, what was contemplated here was a small building with a large area from outdoor storage. That was in essence what was pitched.
Right, exactly.
And in essence, what the applicant is proposing is to enclose what would have been outdoor storage with a garage.
And double the building, correct.
I don't know, I don't know, we can make that leap of faith on that, that's exactly what they are proposing, larger, because they're adding sixty-six percent to the size of the building.
Right.
But again, the, the use, an outdoor storage yard for commercial purposes is not permitted in the zone. So what is contemplated here, if, if the use var- if a, if a contractor came in and put in bulldozer, small bulldozers and landscape equipment and all of that, that's consistent with what was granted in the use variance. That was what was contemplated.
We talked about at the time, right, exactly.
Right. So ultimately, the question here is, rather than have outdoor storage, i- is it permissible to make a garage rather than outdoor storage? That is roughly what is being-
So we're basically taking that out storage, that outdoor storage-
Making it a garage.
And making it indoor storage?
Right.
Right. And, you know, using aesthetically pleasing buildings that are replica of, of more of a residential outside structure than, than a cinder block building, you know, you know, a roof line that's more indicative of a residential than a flat roof, which looks much more like a commercial building, you know. Those, those are the things that we're looking to improve on the site.
Got it.
I mean, that's, I don't, in some respects, you can also treat it as an amendment to the use variance that was previously granted. Either, I mean, the use itself, the variance is simply for the use. There was no variance granted for building coverage, for setbacks, for anything else related to the site. There were no, the, the, the prior variance that came before the board was strictly limited to use. Now-
For that building?
No, use for the site.
Well, for the site.
Right.
And so there were conditions regarding outdoor storage, but there were no conditions placed on the buildings themselves. So that in essence, you know-
I thought before what we said was the storage, right, for the use variance was going to be, as an example, in the back of the building, right, so it wasn't visible to the neighbors or anybody driving by. And now what you're saying is basically, the use variance here allows them to do pretty much anything they want on that site, regardless of whether it's adding structure to it?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm, what I'm saying is that there were screening, you know, there were screening requirements and things of that sort, but what, what was contemplated was storage on the site. It's, I mean, it's not-
Well, it was the use of that building too. I mean, that had a lot to do with it.
But I mean, the uses of the buildings are consist, roughly consistent what was in, I mean, it was for-
Well, not when you're adding offices to a second story and-
There was an off, I mean, I, I believe there was an office previously there, right?
What, a top of the roof?
So, Jim?
I mean, we have garages and an office, which is what was previously there.
No, I'm talking about the second story. If, if it's a peaked roof, where you're talking about adding an area up there for officers or something, it, that, that wasn't even contemplated in that.
No, I mean, again, but what was, I mean, if this was a residential use, right, you could change the peak, go from a flat roof to a peaked roof.
Maybe we should have left it residential then, huh?
What's that?
Nothing.
I mean, that's allowed as a fright, so.
So, so what I'm trying to understand, Jim, is, like, what I think we're, I could be wrong, but what we're struggling with is the added s- space in buildings. And are we, are you saying that we shouldn't be looking at that? We shouldn't be just thinking in our heads, oh, they're doubling this or doubling that. We should only be looking at the type of use which was storage, not changing.
Well, I mean, you're looking at the use, okay? You're not looking necessarily, you're looking at the overall, overall use at the site. There was no, I mean, again, there was, to the extent that there was buildings with a contractor's yard that was total, I don't, for argument's sake, six thousand, what was the, what's the impervious?
So the-
Total impervious.
The existing impervious is twenty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-nine square feet, and-
So that would be a combination of the building footprint and the outdoor storage.
And afterwards will be like two hundred square foot less.
So, you know, in essence, the only difference from a use point of view, so the same rough, roughly the same use of the site, the s- the same amount of use on the site would be, you know, roughly the same, whether the, whether a van is parked in a garage or in a parking space in the spot, does that necessarily have any impact on the neighbors? Because they're not, I mean, really, they're not, they're just talking about indoor storage versus outdoor storage for the most part.
So you're saying because the impervious area is roughly the same, two hundred feet less, that it's immaterial where the structures are part or not part of it?
No, it's not, it's, it's, it's because of the, the type of use that was contemplated. What was contemplated here was outdoor storage, which, that goes to the issue of impervi- impervious surf, you know. In essence, how much of this site is used for storage? The, I mean, it's not, if you took the, the, the building, the bigger building, the main building, I think by going from a flat roof to a peaked roof, the fact that you get, you know, loft space in the half-story, I think is, is really a wash. I don't think that necessarily is changing things. The harder question is the other building where you're in essence doubling the size of the outbuilding. But as far as going from a flat roof to a peaked roof and picking up space inside the, the peak of the roof, I, I don't think that violates necessarily the use variance at all.
And, and the, and the, the use of the other accessory building, call it, is for storage, in essence.
It's a garage.
Vehicle storage, vehicle storage-
Right.
-versus parking lot storage.
Right. So the question is, are you putting, you know, the vi- it, one vehicle store inside, one vehicle stored outside of that?
Okay, got it.
So essentially, you're saying, Jim, I think, that we could take that whole site and just cover it, and that would be storage, and that's all we really, we're not changing anything, but what's the configuration of the storage?
Again, I, I don't know what the building coverage, I mean, we, we haven't, we haven't looked at the building coverage issues in the zone. I don't know.
Oh, we're way under.
I mean, you're way under the building coverage and things like, obviously you can't just enclose the whole site with a-
No, but I think what Tom is mentioning is, is a good point that-
In theory.
As long as you don't over, get the building bigger than-
What's allowed.
What's allowed for that property.
Right.
Right, we're not looking, well, you know, the only thing is, there's an existing non-conformity with the property line setback, just because the building already is-
Well, that's the other thing I was thinking. It, it basically isn't, wouldn't there be a certain amount of percentage that can only-
Well, that's the other, I mean, the other question is, and, and I don't, you know, I don't see to change it.
So there's an existing non-conformity-
That's what I'm thinking, right.
-for a setback from-
On the front side of the building.
From the front side of the building.
But also the size of the building that, that you can only increase it a certain amount? Am I not thinking correctly?
No, because once you, again, it's no longer a non-conformal use.
Right, because it's-
It's a use permitted by areas.
We changed it, okay.
And one of the things that the variance says is that any, any prior non-conforming use is no longer allowed.
Okay.
So-
So, so-
We didn't address the issue with respect to non-conformity with respect to the setback, because there is, you know, the, the, the front of the existing building is-
It's fifteen-
Is in the, I mean, that, that's in the front yard setback, so I don't know.
It's fifteen point six instead of twenty.
Right.
Well, no, it needs to be more than fifteen, twenty if it's a front yard.
Well, it is a front yard.
Right, so minimally, it would be, if it's R twenty in that area, you'd-
Oh, wait, that, is that, well, is that the front yard or is just the front?
You're right.
That's the front, there.
And this is a side?
That's still a front.
That's also the front. We ran into that at-
That's still a front.
Yeah, we ran into that at, at Hannaford's, right?
It's similar to that other area.
So with a flat yard, this is still considered a front yard.
Right.
So then, the front yard setback is to the center line of the street, and that it conforms with.
No.
But it, so then the other would be, no, it says from the center line of the street is sixty feet.
We took that out of the code.
Okay, front line of the other street.
It's, we just have front line of other street and county-state highway, so this would be thirty-five feet from the property line.
Thirty-five. So we're at fifteen point six. But that's an existing non-conformity.
Right.
Correct.
Now, if they put it into-
But they're increasing it as soon as they, no, but they're not increasing it.
That's, that's what, yeah.
I mean, that's, the question is if they change the roof to the other areas.
Yeah.
And we need people at the second floor and a setback.
Again, it's not a second floor, it's a half-story, so the two amount, right, one and a half stories.
Right and a half story.
We're going to gain eighteen hundred square feet up there.
Not, is it eighteen hundred or nine hundred?
Nine hundred to the garage.
Okay, that's right, then, you're right.
That was a rough estimate for me taking off, you know, just taking the middle half of the building.
Yeah, because I should be on those, right here, yeah.
I mean, I don't, again, that's, I don't know if it's in the pad, I mean, it has to add.
There we go again.
If you change your roof line on, it's a building that's a setback, do you require it?
Yeah, eighteen hundred, right, yeah, you're right, eighteen hundred.
So the eaves count, the eaves of the roof count as setback, not just the structure itself?
Well, if it's just the roof line, nothing above it, but if you're putting habitable space, it's a second, even though it's a half-floor-
Right.
It's no habitable space on the second floor.
And that would change the setback to-
You'd need a variance.
For the roof, for the front yard.
I mean, we can look into that further, Jim, we can argue that out.
No, I, I, I think if you're changing that building, then theoretically, yes, you need a, a variance. And that seems to be the only variance that would be required. I think the sign units are okay, right?
So if you increase a square footage out, say, a half-story, you're not going any closer to the road, you're still increasing the variance?
So if the first floor is illegal, non-conforming, it's fine. But then when you put a second floor on, you just had a variance on Blue Boulevard for your neighbor.
But there is a partial second floor on this building.
But you're increasing it to eighteen hundred, I don't think it's that big up there.
Right, eighteen hundred feet.
So if I'm increasing the second floor, not just adding, but if I'm increasing the second floor, I would need a variance for the setback. I'm increasing the first floor too, but not on that side of the building.
Right, because that's not, right.
So to, so the two things are the interpretation of whether or not we can increase, and then if we do increase, we would need a variance for the second floor, or for the, for the, the existing non-conformity.
Okay, that's right. Okay, so, everybody kind of-
So, so what's our next, so then our, our question would be, what's our next step?
That's our question.
(laughing) Well, we're on the same page then.
But I think the next step would be, um, I think if you've got elevations, proposed elevations?
We will have elevations as quick as you need them.
So, um-
Come back with some numbers?
Well, isn't the first step deciding whether they want to, to get the, the variance to do the, the building, isn't that the first step? They have to decide what they want to do before we can make a ruling on whether we just do the interpretation or whether there's a variance needed to do what they want to do.
Right, well, right.
Exactly.
Yeah, you need to decide on the interpretation of the use variance, or the rest is.
Right, it, we need to know whether or not we can do it before we ask you if we can.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. I don't know, do you think we, it's worth looking at it again or not? I think we've seen, we don't have an idea what we wanted.
I did provide you with some lovely pictures of the existing-
Yeah, yeah.
Very sharp, thank you.
Do we need any more information to do the interpretation? I don't think we do. Well, is that a public hearing for it? I don't think we ha- well, I'm not sure if we have. I don't, do we need one? I'm not sure we do for interpretation, do we?
I don't think we need one.
I don't think we do either.
I'd like to, um, put it over for-
Yeah.
This two meetings, so I want to see if there's any case law on use variance.
I would like to see that myself, yeah.
Um, because there's basically two ways to proceed. One would be either a straight interpretation as to whether or not what's proposed-
Mm-hmm.
-is permitted-
Right.
-under the existing variance.
Exactly. Exactly.
The second one would be, in essence, consider this to be an application to amend the prior use variance, which is also permitted.
Okay.
You know, there's nothing that says that, that prior variance is set in stone. That can always be amended, in which case it would be, you know, different conditions and things of that nature.
So what do you wanna do, a couple of weeks?
Yeah, so if we put it out.
Meeting for a couple of weeks.
Couple of me, I meant a couple, I meant a couple of meetings is what I meant. So that would be, um-
April 23rd?
Is that right? April 23rd? And we'll make a decision that night, interpretation that night.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, would it behoove us to make an application for the area variance?
Yes.
For the front, the front?
And that, that would be an area variance for an existing nonconformity because we are changing the structure?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And if you would supply the elevations-
Yep.
As a part of that.
Yep.
So to the board, would you like to hear the variance for the building on the ninth, I think it's the ninth, and a public hearing could be set in conjunction with the first one on the, and we're not having a public hearing on that.
No, we're not gonna have a-
But you could hear the public hearing on the 23rd, no?
What public hearing?
If for an area of here.
Oh, well, okay.
We bring them in on the ninth. You set their public hearing for the 23rd.
I don't even think we'd have to bring them in on the ninth.
Let's do the decision first.
Okay.
Because that way, we don't even know if you're gonna, you know, it might not go in your favor.
I understand, I understand.
Right?
Yep.
So the 23rd is the interpretation, that's when we're gonna have that. And I'm just putting down here, what, May 14th was that other one, if I'm correctly beat, right?
Okay.
Yeah, and then, and then that night, if we wanna go forward, then the next, we'll try, we'll make it the next meeting.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Yep.
Everybody happy with that?
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
And are you happy with that?
Thank you.
I'm leaving this for me?
Yeah.
I had a new easel I got to buy, new easels, after the last meeting when I couldn't open it.
I go back to work and I'm like, I'm gonna buy new ones.
I have a, am I the only one that got this for the ethics?
I got it as well.
You're not signing it?
I haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Sorry.
It doesn't say that you have to say no.
Is that what people say?
Yeah.
I guess we better, yeah.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
I'll second that.
Home favorite?
I'm sorry, hello, who did it? Who did the motion?
I did the motion.
I second.
And everybody approved it.
It's 37 PM, Al and Peter?
Yes, please.
Al, Peter, okay.
He wants to know. So she wants to know, you guys' vice. We weren't the only two that have. Here's Tom. I take Tom to relax. It's been a week dinner, man.